Okay, thank you. Good evening. I would like to call in October 29th, National Board of Education meeting to order. It is now seven o'clock and we are at the Nashville High School North Lecture Hall. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver is not here tonight. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney and Ms. Gillis are not here tonight.
No.
Other attendees, Dr. Mosley?
Here.
Dr. McKinney is here.
Yep.
Ms. Ogara?
Here.
And Mr. Donovan is here. We have a quorum. Madam President?
Okay.
Did I miss someone? Oh, I apologize. Ms. Fitzpatrick is here.
Okay. I am going to, in a minute, ask Mr. Guarino to lead us in the prayer. And one of the guests from Meals Matter, Yana Antula, will lead us in the pledge. Thank you. But right before the prayer, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Jill Coyle, a Title I teacher at Led Street who passed away recently. So if we could all stand, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we please stay standing? Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first thing we're going to start off with tonight is a presentation, a student presentation on Meals Matter. It's students in the DECA program from Nashville High South, whose advisor is Lisa Yates, that are doing tremendous work. Very proud of what they're doing, and they're going to give us a presentation tonight. So thank you all for what you're doing, and thank you all for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us today. My name is Yana Antula. This is Patrick Martin and Sawyer Cosgrove, and we're current seniors at Nashville High School South. We're here today to talk about Meals Matter, which is a program we're working on implementing within our high school to address the problem of food insecurity. With approval from this board, Meals Matter will be able to begin accepting donations to benefit the students in the city of Nashville. The three of us are leading this project in collaboration with our school's video production team, human relations and marketing classes, and the Nashville Technology Center DECA chapter. We estimate that there are as many as 100 students in our school alone that face the inability to buy lunch on a daily basis. So the inspiration behind this project was the signs in our school's cafeteria that say, "No money, no food." We believe that no student should have to worry about when or where their next meal is coming from regardless of their personal situation. So we conducted a survey within our high school and received over 350 responses, finding that 55% of respondents have had the inability to buy school lunch at some point in their academic careers. We also found that 27% of respondents have had a family situation inhibit them from access to school lunch. A more positive finding of this survey is that only 13% of students reported that they are on the federal reduced lunch program but are still unable to afford lunch at the reduced price. This indicates that the federal free and reduced lunch program is working, although the cutoff for aid is not necessarily the cutoff for need. So we understand that there is not enough funding available to provide every student in the Nashville school system with a lunch every single day for free. We hope to alleviate this financial burden from the school district by reaching out to the larger community to provide lunches for students in need. So far, we have met with Mr. Atflberg of United Way, Ms. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Donovan to discuss the logistics of this program. We have also met with the food services staff at our school to refine a program for students to use. The primary goal of this project is to spike a positive change within our school extending to benefit the city of Nashville. So Meals Matter will be funded by the community for the community.
In our goals to solve food insecurity at our school, Meals Matter will act as a funding source for student lunches. Rather than gathering food and distributing it, we plan to implement our program as something students can use to anonymously get lunch. After hearing stories firsthand from food insecure students at our school, we understand this can be a sensitive topic that many may not want to share with the world. So knowing this, our systematic approach to getting food insecure students lunch goes as follows. Student IDs with barcodes linked to the Meals Matter accounts will be placed at every register in the cafeteria. So when a student needs our services, they'll just enter the cafeteria like every other student, enter the line, grab their lunch. And then when they finally get to the register, they can communicate to the food services staff that they need the service, where the staff will then just scan the card and the student can go on their day with their lunch. This way, it's not anything that's going to allow the student to stand out. So as members of the Board of Education, we do understand that you may be concerned about the program's funding and if the school district may become responsible for paying for these lunches. But to assure you this program won't hurt the school district and only benefit the students, we have installed some security precautions. To ensure this account never goes into debt, we'll set a balance of, a minimum balance of $300, which is approximately 100 meals. So as we monitor the account on a day-to-day basis, we can know when we may need to temporarily shut it down until we, again, gain sufficient funding. Another piece of this would be if we were to temporarily shut down, we would have signs above every line in the cafeteria of probably our Meals Matter logo, one side being green, indicating the program's up and running, and another being red, indicating the program's temporarily shut down, just so then students are able to know what's available to them on a day-to-day basis. Now, one thing I'd like to bring up is that in every step of this process, we've been asked, "What about those who choose to abuse this program? What about them?" But in our goals to help students, we want to help change the conversation from why help to why not help. We want to focus this project on, we want the focus of this project to not be on the few who may choose to abuse it, but all the good that Meals Matter will be doing. Meals Matter will be a burgeoning nonprofit organization. In order to obtain revenue, we plan to host multiple in and out-of-school fundraisers and attend various community, various community events to educate about food insecurity and while there, sell Meals Matter merchandise. Students involved with Meals Matter will also seek financial support from local businesses, which will give us another chance to spread awareness about food insecurity in our community. Financial sustainability is crucial to our organization. The most prominent funding of money will be our presence on the United Way of Greater Nashville's website, where we will have our own designated page where people can make one-time or even periodic donations. You'll also be able to make donations through the use of a United Way mobile application. We plan to gain at least $27,000 from corporate support, our presence on the United Way website, and the selling of Meals Matter merchandise. All of these incomes will be ongoing throughout the year. We also plan to acquire at least $3,000 from various in and out-of-school fundraisers, such as volleyball tournaments, 5250 raffles, or even jeans days. We plan to host most of those activities over the course of the next three months. That brings our total fundraising goal to $30,000. With approval from this board, we plan to present to the Executive Board of the United Way and become a fiscal agency of their program. This will give us the opportunity to start fundraising immediately. The connection of Meals Matter to the United Way of Greater Nashville is key to our project. Our hope is to be in every middle and high school within the next three years and in every school in the district over the next five. This will help eliminate hunger during the school day. Thank you very much for listening to our presentation today.
Thank you. Okay. So you're looking for a vote for our approval tonight? Okay. Would anybody like to comment before we have a motion? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Thank you for reaching out and doing this. I think it's a terrific initiative. From what I've read and what you just presented, it seems very well thought out. You've done your legwork up front. But I have a challenge for you. Okay? Sometimes we use the word equity in this horseshoe when we talk about what happens in different schools. And I understand you have to start somewhere. So south is the perfect place to start. But three or five years out, it's a necessary sequence of where you want to go, and I think it's realistic for the long term. But I would challenge you folks to do it a lot sooner. Right? I mean, when they talk about child nutrition, I mean teenagers, 4,000 calories a day, right? Just for breathing. And then you sleep 10 hours and 4,000 calories a day. So, but it's the little kids, those in elementary and the middle, who are even perhaps at similar risk, given their smaller bodies needing more nutrition. So I would ask, I don't want you to accelerate beyond reality, but at the same time, if you can bring it in closer. The other thing I would say is we have a budget season, kind of starts February, March, depends, we're done by the end of June, but it really depends when we're done. I would come back during that process and see if there's anything we can do for you in the budget. No promises, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to have a conversation while we're talking about money. Or maybe we can give you a room to you, I mean, there may be some resources that aren't cash, they're called in-kind. You'll find out a lot about in-kind donations. Terrific. Thank you for the teachers and the staff that got behind this and is really enabling it. The other thing is there's an organization, Mr. Markku could probably tell you more about it, 68 Hours, right Adam? Is that what it's called? So they look for the kids, they look, and the United Way is the distribution point for that program. So are you familiar with it?
Yep.
Okay. So they take care of the kids on the weekends, right? They give them duffel bags or bags full of food. So there's a lot of initiative and momentum. So good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman, if I may? Some of my students actually went to 68 Hours of Hunger to learn about it, and they were transformed. So thank you for that.
Hi, Lisa Yates, human relations teacher, along with Suzanne Winters, who is the teacher for, who I like to call the Mighty Three. But some of my students actually went to 68 Hours of Hunger as they were learning about food instability and hunger in New Hampshire and volunteered to see what happens in our community, and they were absolutely transformed.
Well, you guys are going to be doing transforming work yourself, so.
Thank you.
You're on the same page.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Meals Matter project proposal.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak to this? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, I would. I am so impressed with all of you and all of the effort that you have put into this. I actually printed out your entire proposal, and I am floored by the amount of research that went into your decision-making in this, including looking up our policies, which makes me happy because policies are my thing. And I don't know if the public knows, but we have a policy that states that for the elementary schools, if you don't have lunch, you'll be given lunch. You get a sandwich and some vegetables. So I appreciate that you've taken so many different elements into consideration when making this. So I am wholeheartedly for this. I think it's wonderful to see young people giving back to your community and helping out your fellow students in this way. So kudos to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you to all the students for your hard work, for everything that you've done, and for reaching out to your fellow students, and also thanks to your teachers. And this is a great thing that you guys are doing. You're proving yourselves leaders, and we have a lot to learn from you. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go into that, too.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I concur with the whole effort that they're making. I think that it's imperative because students, they do not have the calories, they do not have the nutrition, in some way, some fashion, that they cannot, you know, adequately function and learn. I have firsthand experience with, from 40 years ago, when my two girls were in Maine Dosterville, and things were tough at the time, because it just happened to be one of those times when you get in-between jobs. And I was informed by the principal that not to be concerned because lunch was there for them, no matter what. And I appreciate that so much, that when I see something like this happening, where the students are going and working to supply students with lunches and nutrition, and be able to up their ability to learn, this is something that's fantastic, and I will support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
This is what education is all about. This shows, you know, you go through public school, you learn a skill set, you have humanity and compassion, you see a need, and you use your skills to address that. This is so impressive, and this just makes me so proud of our school system that we can produce students who have this level of caring and compassion and following through on something. So thank you very much. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mosley, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. I too, I'm sorry, I too want to thank all of you, and I want to thank Ms. Yates and Ms. Winters for their leadership in this. But thank you all to all of you who are making a difference. And I think it was Ms. Yates, I read, that said, "This isn't on a report card, it's not about a grade. No data will show what you are doing, but it is as important, if not more important, than all the other things." So thank you for what you're doing for our community, our students, in leading the way and showing what thoughtfulness, caring is all about. Thank you so much. Okay. Could you read the motion?
Okay. On the motion is to approve the Meals Matter project proposal. Are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
We're ready.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
We have eight yeses and zero noes. Motion carries.
Before you leave, if anybody is watching and would like to make a donation, is there an address or a place at this point who would they make a check out to? Do you have any information on that?
You could just make a check out to Ms. Winters or, I don't know. But just, address would be Nashville High School South.
Nashville High School South? And they could note Meals Matter on the check? And thank you so much, and I hope you get a lot of donations. It's such a worthy cause. Good for you. Thank you. Thank you. Wow. Okay, at this point, I would like to suspend the rules and take an item that is under new business. I don't want this person to sit here for a couple hours while we go through all of our agenda. But it is the introduction of Ms. Dawn Miller, the new data analyst. So if you'd like to come up and join us? And welcome to our district. Thank you. Ms. Miller, if you could just give us a little bit of background about yourself and why Nashville was appealing to you in applying for this data position?
Okay, my name is Dawn Miller. I have a background in engineering, electrical engineering. I also have an MBA, and I've always worked in data. Data and I have an intimate relationship, and so it speaks to me. What drew me to Nashville District was the job itself, data analyst. And when I reviewed the district and the job description, I applied, and I was very pleased when I was offered the position.
Okay. Thank you so much. I know that, from what I understand, the people on the interview team were in total agreement that you were the right person for the position. So thank you and welcome aboard. I don't know if anybody has a quick question for Ms. Miller? Ms. Timmons?
That's Ms. Miller.
Hello, Dawn. Good seeing you again.
Seeing you.
And how was their sandwich? It was good. Okay, congratulations. I was really pleased when I saw your name on the roster, and welcome aboard. I'm sure you're going to do our district proud.
Thank you.
So congratulations, and I look forward to working with you and the board, working with you as well.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Okay. We are going to the consent agenda at this point. So is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
The motion.
Okay. Second.
Are you ready for the?
We're ready for the roll call.
Vote, Madam President? Okay. On the motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. And there are no items removed for the consent agenda, so are there any communications outside the consent agenda? If none, we'll continue. We have public question and comment period limited to items on this agenda with a 15-minute time limit. And I believe we have Ken Heaton from Nashville High School South here to speak.
Good evening. I'm Ken Heaton, a social studies teacher at Nashville High School South. I'm here to address some concerns regarding, I think there was something on security and weapons policy that was on the agenda. But I'm here on behalf of the staff at the high schools to voice our concerns over the training, or more correctly, the lack of training we have received with the ADD protocols so far this year. This protocol, "avoid, deny, defend," is supposed to be enacted in the case of extreme emergencies, such as an active shooter. And incidentally, there was another school shooting today in North Carolina at a high school. Last spring, this board strongly stated that the school district had safety as one of their top priority, specifically as it pertained to school shootings. I'm here to say that at the high school level, we feel that you have left us hanging, and you have failed to adequately follow through on the promises to ensure the safety of our students. It is almost the end of October. Quarter one is over this week. We are a quarter of the way through the school year, and the district has yet to schedule or offer any new training for staff to learn or practice these ADD protocols. I've heard that there is some Phase II training that involves tourniquets and how to stop bleeding from gunshot wounds, and that other buildings have gotten that training, but not at the high school. But quite frankly, while I will appreciate some first aid training to stop gunshot wounds, it will not help me figure out what to do to avoid students getting gunshot wounds. It will not help me figure out what to do in the moment that that emergency situation arises and I need to make decisions to try and avoid students getting gunshot wounds. And I don't believe the district has adequately given us that training at any level. Now, last spring, I sat here and voiced my concerns that the training the staff was going to receive on the last day before summer was going to be incomplete and leave many questions unanswered. Last year, I said I was afraid that the training you were going to provide us was going to be more lip service to the public rather than bring meaningful change. Last year, I worried that my coworkers weren't going to be heard about what they felt really needed to happen to ensure the safety of our students. Last spring, I was assured that this wouldn't happen. It's October 29th, and we are still waiting. The training on last day in school, it left a lot of questions and worries with the staff. But I'm not sure, was there any feedback collected about that day by the staff and what they went through? Has any of that feedback been addressed to the staff? We haven't heard, and we don't feel like that training has done anything to really make us safer. Now, that training involved a police officer trying to tell us like it is that these are terrible situations. And the first point of emphasis that he made was that people panic and don't make great decisions when they are stressed. They are often not sure what to do and make mistakes. We heard such other advice, such as, "Grab the gun with both hands if you can, and hold on and don't let go." We heard other pieces of advice. What else? Oh, "Don't fight fair." We heard, "Run if you can." That advice, while appreciated, was not very reassuring, nor was it what anyone would call real practical training. We also got conflicting messages about things to do, like, we discussed at length that if you were a teacher and you had a weapon during one of these shootings, what should you do when you encounter police? Are we allowed to have a gun as a teacher? From the police officer, it sounded like the answer was yes, but we weren't sure, and no one's followed up with us. We had a lot of questions about what was going on and what should we do. And while he tried to answer them all, he essentially told us, "Hey, you know, we just need to work out what is best for your space." Well, to date, no one has followed up on any of those things. No one has given us an opportunity to work out what is best for our space. But more importantly, he said that the old way of handling these situations is obsolete. Hiding and hoping for help should not be the only plan. He said, quote, "Hope is not a course of action." Now currently, our drills are nothing different than we did last year. We practice shutting and locking the door and hiding out in the corner of the room. We practiced shutting and locking the door and hiding out in the corner of the room. We have asked the students what they think they should do in a few different scenarios, but the teachers have been giving nothing new in terms of what is actually right and wrong, good or bad, or what to do in the event of emergency, according to these ADD protocols. When is the right time to avoid or deny or defend? How do we actually do any of those things? We've been given no meaningful instruction. Wait, wait, sorry. There, there was a poster that we all have on the side of our, our doors that we, that we got. Those were new this year. But it's just a basic outline of, oh, defend, deny, you know, uh, you know, avoid if you can. It's not very specific and it leaves too many questions unanswered. But that's it. That's all we've gotten that's new this year. A poster. We have not had any actual or meaningful training of what we should really be doing in a given situation. You, the board, instituted the ADD policy because you wanted to give us a chance, a better chance in the event of a worst-case scenario. But how are we supposed to really do that with no practice, no practical guidance, no practical instruction of where to go and what to do should a real emergency arise? No scenarios where staff and students are fully involved practicing how to move and react to a dynamic situation? Nor is it planned, as far as we know. If we ask students to take a test on material without ever having them practiced it, you would call us out as being ineffective teachers. That is an educational practice. That would be unacceptable. But we at the high school feel that this is what you are doing to us. You state to the public that we are fully trained and able to handle any emergency, but we are not. And that is not acceptable. And my staff has asked me to come here today to relate that to you in no uncertain terms. So what I'm asking is this board to act. If safety is really your biggest concern, as you have said many times, then we feel like you would have actually done something for us or with us by now. But we are still waiting and it's October 29th. We haven't been shown anything meaningfully different this year. We are still practicing what we always have done. Lock the door, be quiet, and hope for the best. And hope is not a course of action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heaton. Dr. Mosley, do we have the schedule for this year for?
Yes, we do. I'd be happy to talk a little bit about that. It's, first of all, it's very, very unfortunate that Mr. Heaton had to come to a board meeting and to read this statement. This isn't about pointing fingers at not enough training or not. This is about doing it with fidelity and communicating. And certainly, this could have been handled at the, at the building level with the principal, who certainly could have given Mr. Heaton and others more accurate information. I disagree with the assertion that nothing has happened. Nothing has changed. That's not true. What has changed is that we have a partnership with the police. What has changed is that we have some steps to making sure that we have and keep our kids safe. I know that Mr. Richard talked with the trainings with his faculty as a follow-up. I know that teachers have talked with, with their students about follow-up about the training. I know that kids, kids know that shelter in place is not the immediate way to, to address a safety concern. I know that be, I know that because my own students that go to the same school that Mr. Heaton is, is referring to has gotten that training and information. I will say that the training has been slow. Yes, it has. Because we don't have officers available every single day to come in and do the training when it's conducive for the building and the timing of it. So we have been working with the police department and by the way, they've been very, very helpful, very, very accessible. And if any questions that was broached today or any questions that the public has, we have school resource officers that are there to speak to it, there to answer questions. And this isn't about the police doing something wrong or me doing something wrong or this board doing something wrong. This is about our kids' safety. And if they can get out of a building without being shot or anything like that because they follow that ADD, ADD training, then I hope they do. I really do. We have been working with the police department because they don't always have officers available when it works and is conducive for our, our particular schools. But we are rolling this out in conjunction and collaboration with the police department. And when they have officers who have been trained to do the ADD, we certainly plug those officers into those schools to do the follow-up training. We did produce a beginning-of-the-year schedule. If it did not include the high school teachers or the high school, that wasn't done because we didn't, we weren't following up. It just wasn't conducive to that schedule at time. But I can assure the public and I can assure the teachers, and again, if they have any questions like that or anything, but you don't need to come to the board and do that. You don't need to come here and say that there's no training. You don't have to come here and try to embarrass the principal or embarrass this board or embarrass the people that work hard. You don't need to do that. You can always pick up the phone and talk to Mr. Richards, who's sitting in, in the audience. You can always go up and talk to Principal Nate Burns. You could always go to a police officer and Chief Lavoy, Captain Testaverde. And they will be there to answer your questions. So we are rolling out the training to the board and to the public. We base the trainings on the availability of our trainers for the police officers and who can conduct the training. And sometimes, depending on their schedule, depending on their availability, we schedule those trainings for the building. We just recently had a training over at the Led Street, which was a command training or safety training over there. I'm looking at Garthin, correct? But there was a?
The mass casualty incident training.
There was a mass casualty incident training over there. We, we, we train, we train as much as we can, but certainly, this isn't about embarrassing anyone. This is about communicating and doing what's right for our kids. We are by far continuing the training. In terms of feedback we got last year, I was there at multiple sites. People were like, wow, thank you for that day. I didn't think, I didn't think about that, but thank you. We got many thank yous. We got many people who appreciate it. Some of the negative feedback that I could, I can think of off the top of my head, we probably scheduled a little bit too many people at the Fairgrounds Middle School with the training. And certainly, it was cramped quarters. We'll learn next time to schedule less people there. But other than that, I thought the trainings were very well. I think people had a lot to think about during that last day of training. I think as a parent, I'm very comfortable and as superintendent saying that we have something in place. So we will, I'd be happy, Mr. Heaton or anyone else, to check in with your building principal to have that dialogue. If there's deficiencies in the training or questions about that training, you don't have to come here and, and make a speech like that. We have police officers that care about our kids, that live in this community, that want to bridge that connection with us and alleviate any concerns, any, any type of, of trepidation that you may have about safety training or shootings. It's unfortunate that we have to train this way, but we have some great officers in this district and some great teachers that are willing to engage in that. So thank you.
Can I ask, do we have a, a written schedule of our intended, uh, follow-up trainings?
Uh, most of those went out at the beginning of the year for the elementary and middle schools. And then some are scheduled during the early release days for staff that weren't present last year. So new teachers to the district got it during NTO. There was one scheduled during an early release for Paris. Secretary's gonna be going on the November 6th in service. And then we're working towards the two high schools right now. The challenge there is there's a limited number of police officers that are trained and they're the two of our largest facilities. So they're working out the logistics between Police Department, Chris Lussard, and the two high school principals.
Okay. I, I will say, I did attend the new teacher, uh, safety training that was held here and it was excellent. And I think most of the people there felt it was, it was valuable and the fact that you could hear a pin drop in the room. So, um, maybe it, it wasn't perfect. Maybe it wasn't all it should have been. I think a lot of people are looking for more specifics as to come into a school and say, here's your room, here's the way you would get out if something was happen, happening in another part of the building. I think they probably were looking for more specifics and hopefully, that will come. But quite frankly, for me as a board member, um, if we had done absolutely nothing and we had had an incident, I, I would have felt worse if we had had no training at all. Is it, is it perfect? No. But we're doing the best we can. The police department has worked very hard trying to coordinate with us. But I think Ms. Fitzpatrick said there's four people at this point working on that. But I certainly appreciate the staff's concern about safety because I don't take the philosophy that it couldn't happen here. It could happen here in Nashville as well as anyplace else in this country, what we're seeing. So I think the more we prepare for it, the better off we will be, the more prepared. And hopefully, we can get a schedule out as to when the high schools will be addressed for further training.
We have to work, and again, this isn't me directing anyone internally to do the training. Chief Lavoy, his entire faculty have been great. And it's just a question of coordinating and getting that training out to, that fits their schedules. We have followed through on all of the training expectations that, that were broached to us at the beginning of the year. We had discussions around new teachers coming in, from, from teachers at the high school and teachers district-wide saying, how do we get the training for the new teachers coming in? Dr. McKinney and, and Donna and, again, the police made accept, they rearranged their schedules and, and I, this, these are good people who rearranged their schedules to come in and do safety training for all new teachers. These are people in our community and our police office who rearranged their schedules to make sure that everyone had that initial training. And they continue to rearrange their schedules to make sure that there's part two of the training. We said at, on the onset of this, that every single building would have part one and part two training and then we would start or work in collaboration with the drills with the police officers. And we haven't wavered from that. This is a district of 12 elementary schools, three middle schools, two comprehensive high schools. Within those high schools, you have CTE programs. So this, this takes time. So I encourage anyone who has any reservations or concerns running like that, please talk to the building principals. If the building principals can't give you the answers, Dr. McKinney, Donna, myself, would be more than happy to direct you and give you information. And I would also encourage those to please check the iNews because that's where all of the trainings are listed.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Heaton for coming and speaking about this. And I apologize if it seems controversial to the board, but I welcome these opinions. I mean, not all opinions that we get are gonna be what everybody wants to hear. And, and I think it's good that our staff is coming to us and saying that they have concerns and I hope we as a board can do better. I also heard, I believe from you, that some of the staff is uncertain whether or not they're allowed to have a weapon on school property. We should as a board clarify that. I've heard from other teachers that some are interested in carrying to help protect students. I would welcome a discussion from staff to feel, to figure out if there's any way that they can help and assist in, in being part of the solution to this problem. We have a, a policy that we're gonna talk about tonight on weapons on school property. It has two exceptions and it doesn't include staff in terms of carrying for protection. Maybe that's some discussion that we, we want to have as a board. Maybe there are some logistical strategies that can come from places other than the police. Firearms trainers sometimes train about weapons, but sometimes they have other types of logistics and training that could also assist. So I'm open to, to broadening the conversation and enhancing the safety of our students if, if the board is willing to engage in a discussion of that sort. Maybe it's, it's some students carrying, especially if they're veterans and they're fully trained or they're non-veterans and they, you know, get the training. That discussion is something we ought to have, not just put under the rug. And then make it clear in our policy where we stand so our staff isn't confused. That's all.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Are we now entertaining the thought of arming teachers? Is that what I'm hearing? And that's what's up for, for broaching for discussion? Is that correct?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking that question. No.
I would.
Is that what you're asking and proposing?
I'm, I'd like to understand what the concerns of staff are. To understand, we can find a solution. If he's uncertain or others are uncertain what are the procedures of this district, then we ought to clarify them. I don't see any harm in having a discussion.
Uh, I, I think it does deserve discussion. I don't think it's here at this board tonight. I think it needs to go to a policy committee meeting because it certainly would be on, on the policy, uh, agenda. Pardon?
I apologize. I would imagine this is an HR matter more than a policy matter. Because we have a policy saying that the only exceptions to our firearm policy are officers of the law or with written permission from the principal for an instructional purpose. So for example, in 1800s, musket.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the only exceptions that we have currently. So if we want to change employment conditions, that's really an HR matter, not a policy matter.
Okay.
In, in my opinion.
So that would be an HR issue at this point. And I don't think tonight, in this meeting tonight, is the time to look into this, to have a discussion whatsoever. Ms. Timmons?
Um, yes, it is a HR matter and I don't advocate, just so for the record, that teachers carry guns in school. That's just me. I oppose to that strongly. However, I think we should have that conversation at the HR committee meeting.
Okay. Ms. Porter?
I want to thank you, Mr. Heaton, for coming and speaking. As a former classroom teacher who has lived through two lockdowns with students, I understand what teachers are feeling. It's, it's an awesome, awesome responsibility to be in charge of the safety of other people's children and of each other, of our colleagues, of people who are working there. It's, I think it's something that we can't talk enough about, especially given the climate that the country is in right now. I think that the specifics of this, how we do it, is beyond the scope of tonight's meeting, but it is important. And I understand that time passes differently for different people. As a teacher who's coming to school every day and facing children who you need to protect, time passes differently than making a schedule and trying to get things to work. And that's not saying anything bad about anybody. That is just the reality. Because while the police department and the school and the school administration and the board are trying to work out the actual schedule, you're coming to school every day facing children and I, I understand. So I think that, I, I, I don't think we're trying to point fingers. I think this is a very sensitive subject and we all just want to do the right thing. And that's something that we need to continue to work on. So I appreciate your input.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I too would like to thank Mr. Heaton for coming forward and expressing his concerns. Recently, I spoke with a teacher and I was going to bring up something under new business tonight. I was just gonna call it teacher safety. So I'm very well aware of some of the concerns that exist in the high school. And I understand that a teacher was hurt not too long ago in the last couple of weeks. I was going to ask about that. The board didn't hear about that. I kind of like where Mrs. Ho Hensy was going, where we do have an engaged conversation with staff. If it happens in the context of an HR committee, that's fine. I would also make the point that anything that came out of that committee as a recommendation would end up in policy because that's the only way we can codify something. So I think you'd eventually have both committees involved in that. And I think it's a good time to have a conversation. So thank you again, Mr. Heaton. I know you speak for a lot of people who have a very strong concern. And I'm sorry we let you down.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's comments?
Thank you. It's been a very, very busy week, so I have a lot to say and I'm gonna try to squeeze it all in. Last week was Red Ribbon Week in the national effort to combat the use of illegal drugs and the misuse of- and the misuse of illegal drugs at the elementary school. There was a lot of activity that led to healthy life, but in the current climate of abuse and addiction and overdose, there are certainly a great deal of activities. Over 60 kids enjoyed free bowling as a result of Red Ribbon Kickoff. There were five schools represented. There was PAL. There were activities at the Boys and Girls Club, really promoting with kids an opportunity to express and get involved in healthy choices and healthy lifestyle about substance abuse and try to avoid that. There's no really healthy style of substance abuse, but I'm saying to avoid substance abuse, live a healthy lifestyle and make good choices. One of the things I attended last week was through the Harbor Homes around addiction and the recovery. It was a nice event at the Sky Meadow Conference area there. There was guest speakers from Harbor Homes who spoke to counselors, administrators, even the mayor was there, and it was a nice event, again reinforcing Red Ribbon. We just being aware of substance abuse and addiction. Listen, if you're out there, you need some help with addiction or anything like that, this goes for our students or anything like that, there are many, many resources out in our community to help foster support. So reach out to Harbor Homes, reach out to your counselors, and you'll certainly get that support. So I want to thank Donna, I want to thank the administrators, excuse me, Garth, all the principals, the teachers, who really went out and really made this a point of really emphasizing that message. The South CTE hosted a tour of our Proto Lab in the YMCA on the 22nd. There's a Proto Lab that we have in our Career Center CTE program. We're looking for some partnerships there, and it was a nice opportunity to have the YMCA come in and take a look at our Proto Labs and also discuss some programming there. We had some kids from the high school, the group that did some marketing, come and talk to the Fairgrounds Middle School kids around marketing and the potentials or how a business model works. It's a nice way of the kids from the high school coming down to our middle schools to have that conversation with our little ones. Well, I shouldn't say little ones, the middle ones. How about that? We had, C-SPAN came to the North here last week, and I believe some board members were there to speak and watch some of the events transpire there. I see Sue Porter shaking her head. So I want to thank Mr. Smart. He is actually alumni who actually reached out to us, reached out to the board, reached out to all of us, and really, we had C-SPAN come through and do, we had like a C-SPAN bus. If you don't watch C-SPAN, you don't really know how significant a bus is. C-SPAN, when the C-SPAN bus rolls in, it's like a concert for the geeks. So anytime, and I love C-SPAN, I watch C-SPAN 1, C-SPAN 2, and C-SPAN 3. So C-SPAN 3 is a little better, because you can see books and authors. But at any rate, anytime the C-SPAN comes through your community, it's an opportunity for political awareness, social awareness. It's particularly prevalent at this point, because we have the midterms coming up. C-SPAN will be back, as you know, in living in New Hampshire, because of the political environment in terms of the midterms and the upcoming elections. I'm going to go really quickly with this, because I have two high schools to cover. So I'm going to start with, I usually like to talk about events going on in the buildings, events going on in the district that are not committed to athletics, to kind of give a broad sense. So I want to come full circle and just give a read-off of the athletics, and I'll start with the North. The field hockey team did not qualify, and I'll just kind of read through and say congratulations to all of the athletes. Field hockey team had a good season, and the girls' soccer team had a good season as well. They did not make the playoffs, but congratulations to those athletes. The football team at the North finished 7-2, and will be playing its first-round playoffs next Saturday at Merrimack. The golf team qualified here at the North. The boys' soccer team finished ninth and lost in the first round. The unified soccer team is playing in the quarterfinals. The volleyball team lost in the first round of the playoff. The girls' cross-country team qualified for a championship meet, and the boys' cross-country team finished sixth on the divisional meet. Down at the South, field hockey did not qualify. The football team did not qualify for playoffs, but even so, congratulations to those individuals. The golf team did not qualify for championship. The boys were not successful in the second rounds. Soccer, boys' soccer was not successful. Girls' South soccer team lost in the second round. The girls' cross-country girl team qualified at the division meeting. Boys' cross-country team did not qualify. The girls' volleyball team did well. They advanced to the semifinals. I actually want to give a shout-out to our cable company, who actually, when we have an opportunity to really broadcast a lot of these events, and I just happened to be flicking through Channel 99, and I did catch the girls' volleyball game. It was a very exciting game. It was a good one. Even though the feed went out, and you read at the bottom, you did a nice job with giving up-to-date commentary. So congratulations to all those student athletes. You did a nice job. You get them next year if you didn't qualify, and if you're still in the race, go get them. I'd like to just, I'm going to forward the board something that keeps it in perspective around what these gentlemen and ladies presented here tonight. We had a young lady at the Amherst School, and the pictures make you, if you can't tear up on these pictures, you, there's something wrong, but there was a Make-A-Wish Foundation for this young lady, and it was just an amazing sight to see Mickey and Minnie Mouse. And basically, there was a One Wish family that would be going to a Disney resort in Hawaii. The family chose the school as a location to reveal this, because it was the favorite place of the student. I want to thank all of those individuals who made it possible for that, and I just, I don't really have the words to describe it. Only I can say the pictures are a thousand words, and it was just really nice to see that. And I appreciate all of the work that the Amherst faculty have done. Jen Scrub, Dr. Scrub Patty sent the pictures to myself, and before, and Dr. McKinney sent them to me, but I'm going to forward them on to the board and just keeps things in October 20, let me just back up to saying that, I, okay. October 27, there was a nice gathering at the Arlington Community Center for the kids in the community. There was lots of food, candy, pumpkin, face painting, pumpkins, you can paint them pumpkins. And there was, I guess, some dance. I don't know if I heard too many music. I didn't hear too much music. And it was a really nice event for the community of Nashua. I know that the fire department was there. I want to thank them for coming out. They were giving out free coats for kids that needed free coats. Two weeks ago, I don't have the date, but there was a nice community gathering over at Fairgrounds Elementary School. I would tell you that I didn't make it too far, because the food was fantastic. They had food carts, food trucks out there. They had kids there that were selling things. Many, the United Way was there. The teachers were there, the principals were there. This was on a Saturday, and it was just amazing. And thank you to those faculty and the students, and to all of those who participated in that. On that same Saturday, you went across the street, and there was Fairgrounds Middle School, who also had like a craft fair there as well. So I want to thank all of those parents and those teachers and those kids who helped facilitate that and make that available to the public. Finally, not finally, October 18, I guess I want to say I made a radio Parents' Day view, but on WSMN is a kind of a new Nashua local radio station. And, you know, certainly, we're trying to get the word out on everything we're doing here in the Nashville Public Schools, and certainly, I wasn't too talkative, but certainly it was nice to be on that radio station. October 18, we had some of our people from our Technology Committee go out to what's called MasQ. MasQ is held every year at Gillette Stadium. It's a who's-who of all technology. If you are interested in the latest and the greatest in technology, I think it's a great venue to explore. So Rick Ferencoff, myself, this year I went, last year I didn't go, and a couple of his people from the Technology Committee went there. I think it's important to think about the next steps in technology, particularly when we're talking about building a new, or potentially building new high, middle schools and having new facilities. Think, technology changes within the hour, and it's always good to see the best, what's out there. Finally, I just, just as a general message, I say it every year, October 31 is Halloween. I ask the kids to be careful. I ask the public to be aware that the kids are going to be out there, all of our kids. They're kids, they like to do things. Just be out there, be aware of them, kids. Be visible where, I would like to say, that 80 gear, that fluorescent somewhere around your neck, so someone can see you, be safe, and be responsible. If you see a light on in the house, knock on the door. If the house isn't on, the light isn't on outside the house, please avoid that house. So kids, be careful going groups. I think the cutoff is 8:30 or 8 o'clock. I'm not really sure. Just when it gets too, too dark, please come in. And for those who are out there in the community, just be aware that our kids are out there. Drive slowly, and just be cognizant of that. That's it.
Okay. Board member's response to the superintendent's comments. Anything he spoke to?
Yes, I'd like to make a correction. Well, it's not quite a correction. We did have music, by the way. They did the thriller. They answered upstairs at the community center, and the Nashville firefighters, IAFF 789, they were the ones that were distributing the coats to the children. There was, they almost ran out. They took names and sizes and calling people today or tomorrow to tell them they can come and get their coats. We had plenty of things other than what you just said. It was phenomenal. And I'd like to thank the board members that showed up. Mr. Guarino and Heather did all that decoration. We spent Friday decorating that center. It was a lot of work, and Dr. Mosley, of course, was there with his wife, and it was a wonderful event. A lot of time and a lot of money, and thanks, Dr. Chris Elementary School.
Yes.
And Sherri Fulton as well, because she's phenomenal, and she also did a lot of work as well. So.
Thank you. Ms. Porter, do you have anything?
I can. I just, I love it when we hear about what's going on in school with kids, because that's why we're here. So, thank you. I know it was kind of like a laundry list, but we're a big district, and there's a lot of great stuff happening. So I appreciate hearing that at a meeting. Thank you.
Yes. Raymond.
I just wanted to say that I believe there's an award ceremony this evening.
Yes.
Going on for some of our student athletes, and that's why we don't have our student members with us. So congratulations to everybody.
Okay. Mr. Moser, I don't want to forget you.
Thank you for that. I was just thinking about that myself. You know, I listened to everything that Dr. Mosley said, and thinking about the, you know, the policy committee and the HR committee for, you know, discussing of armed teachers. And, you know, I can relate to some of that, because my dad was a guardsman and in the military, and my brother and I both received a lot of gun training. And my dad was a, was an expert. He had a medal for being a gun expert. So, you know, I can relate to some of this stuff. I also know that, you know, over the past years, that I have been on the board, that including myself and a couple of other ones, other members, that we were all licensed to carry. And it seems, you know, interesting that there is a company, Sig Sauer, who is operating a school on just what we talked about, and getting training for teachers, administrators, et cetera, on the safety and the safety around guns, and what to do in the event of an active shooter. So it might be something that we might want to look into at some time and see what kind of training that they, that they can give, and in particular, some, something that they may have already on the, on the record that can be used to, as an adjunct to the police training, or with the, you know, the help of the police department, which I know they're very good, to put together something that might be beneficial to us in the administration and the schools, as to, you know, the safety and what to do in the event of. Might be something you might want to look into. But, you know, I love what the, what the schools did. I know my own kids went to Maine Dusball, and they were very happy there. They, they talk about the teachers that they had there, and even today, after so many years, they still remember the school, the principal, and some of the teachers that they had. I think that is wonderful, when the kids can grow up and remember what they did in the, in the school. So, yeah, I was very happy with it. My wife and I, we've been here over 40 years now in the same address, and we watched the kids come and go, and I count the buses as they go by in the morning or in the afternoon. And I say, well, there goes another bunch of kids who are getting the best.
Thank you.
And that's the way I look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. And let me remind members where to speak to what the superintendent's comments were. Mr. Guarino, do you have anything?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I also want to thank Dr. Mosley for that update. There's a lot of things to comment on, but I'm going to be really brief, and I'm going to thank the fire department and the police volunteers who were at the Community, Arlington Community Center for the Halloween. I didn't really do anything, I just went and ate pizza. So I don't want you to get the wrong idea. Because Gloria gave me, Gloria actually did all the work, her and Heather. So I just want to congratulate Gloria and everybody at the community center who were there to make it a great success. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ohensy.
Thank you. As to Halloween, it's usually 6 to 8 o'clock. It's usually dark, because Halloween has to be spooky, and the sun goes down at like 5:40. So it will be dark, but the kids, hopefully, will be safe. I mean, that's what they do. They go out and they have a good time, and everybody's aware of it. All the drivers are usually very slow, and the weather's going to be good this year. There won't be rain, be in the 50s, high 50s to, you know, 50 at night. So it should be a good day. I hope the kids have a lot of fun.
Mr. Kaufman.
Nothing, nothing, thank you.
I just want to thank the people that sponsored the Arlington Community Center. I know people on this board were there. I did mean to go, but I fell asleep, and it was quarter to 3 when I woke up. So I missed it. I'm honest. But to the Fairgrounds Elementary people, the Fairgrounds Middle School people, the Arlington Street community, all of the teachers and staff who have spent weekend time, their time off, with our students, trying to make the community better. I also want to congratulate our athletes. I've gone to, I think, two football games this year, and I will say, I have been very impressed with the behavior of our students. I have sat amongst the students at one of the games, and I never heard one swear word, which just absolutely floored me. So congratulations to all our students, the athletes and their fans. I'm sorry I missed C-SPAN. And I also would like to say, I don't remember the name, but one of our students, I believe from South, won a state golf tournament, and I don't remember the name, but we do have an outstanding golfer when we're talking about athletes. And I will try to find the name so that person can be recognized. But congratulations to all our students, because I think you learn a lot with good sportsmanship, and that's what I have seen at our athletic events that I've attended. Okay. So we don't have our student members here tonight. I'm guessing they're studying for some type of exam.
They're getting awards.
Award, oh, they're getting awards. Congratulations to them. Oh, how nice. Okay. Committee on the Budget, we haven't had a meeting for that. Moving on to Committee on Finance and Operations, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a number of items from the Finance and Operations Committee. Our first item, which is in the packet, is a contract for services. Committee. Our first item, which is in the packet, is a contract for services for an individual who is working with students in danger of dropping out. This is for $38,049, this is for the, for the year, he'll be here for the entire year. Mr. Donovan went over the contract in detail, so I'm not going to do that. What I'm going to do is move to approve the contract with Jeff Levin for an amount not to exceed $38,049 dropout prevention grant.
Second. Okay, any questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, I have two questions. I noticed that, two questions. The first one is, there's no mention in the motion that it's in the budget, is it in the budget?
It's, it's a grant.
Dropout prevention.
A dropout grant, okay. And my second question is, really has to do with what I, my objection to the contract was at a previous meeting, that I still don't see a confidentiality clause, and I don't see anything in here by reference. Mr. Donovan said there's a generic contract, and that may have language about confidentiality in it, but I don't even see a reference to that in here. So, without a confidentiality clause, I will be voting no.
Are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion to recommend the approval, approve the contract with Jeff Levin for an amount not to exceed $38,049 dropout prevention grant, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Carino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay, we have one no and seven yeses, the motion carries. Our next item is the Teacher E's contract, which, again, Mr. Donovan had gone over this contract in detail at the, at the meeting. So, and we also discussed that we're going to need some feedback, which, which is in the, which is in the motion. So, what I'm going to, going to do is make a move to approve the Teacher E's contract for $36,991.50, with feedback from the teachers, reported back by administration on the effectiveness of software, and feedback from other similar-sized districts currently using Teacher E's.
Second.
This is something that we're going to vote on, contingent on this feedback that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in that event, I will vote for it.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'm confused, when will we get this feedback? Is there a date? I don't understand the motion at all.
Well, there wasn't really a date, and I think we've actually received some feedback already in, that I saw in the handouts. Mr. Donovan, did we, there was some information on other, other?
Yes, in the package, there was some information, I believe that was provided by Dr. McKinney, is that correct? On, on other, on other districts that have been using Teacher E's, is that correct? Yes.
I think that's why I'm completely confused by the motion, because we have some feedback, but I just don't understand, I'm sorry.
Dr. McKinney?
So, can I just speak to the information in the packet, Madam President?
Yes.
So, included in the packet is the learning and support schedule, which outlines the trainings that have happened and the number of teachers that attended, and through those sessions, 176 teachers attended those voluntary sessions. At the early release day, over 230 teachers were trained during the early release day, including all the K-5 teachers and the Unified Arts teachers as well. Behind the packet lists districts from 29,000 all the way down to 100 student districts, size districts that support or use, utilize Teacher E's. You also have support from the Technology Department. Our numbers for teacher use is around 280. We're only using this at the elementary level for K-5 teachers and Unified Arts teachers. Just this last Friday, we finalized registrations for the November Inservice Day, and we have about 50 teachers that have chosen to utilize either district workshops or personalized learning plans to learn more about this, and then we're planning next steps before report cards in December. And teachers are prepared to come after their first trimester to speak to implementation. I invited them tonight, many of them had prior commitments, so they were not able to attend. Just so you know, all the way through these open house sessions and the early release day, I get a Google form from the teachers, I see their responses, I speak to the Teacher E's support staff, I talk to the Teacher E's, teachers that are in each building, there are 23, one to two at each building. I talk about how things are going, how I can support them, put them in contact with support, and then plan our next sessions. So, I would say we're about halfway there in terms of progress towards the December report card date, and I have meetings scheduled both with the Teacher E's team, I would call it, and the secretaries on the November Inservice Day. Thank you.
Dr. Mosley?
Can I just give a little bit of background, and, you know, this is all going to be in the packet, but Dr. McKinney, can you just inform the board about the genesis of this Teacher E's, and who's responsible for the process you used to get to here?
So, the Standards-Based Report Card Committee at the elementary level has been in place like four to five years. There are teachers from all UAs, ELL, classroom teachers, there are elementary administrators, curriculum specialists, middle school principals, and middle school teachers. They've been working on implementation since it rolled out a number of years ago, as well as trying to remediate what we call the punch list of the challenges with Aspen and X2. Last year, we had a number of meetings with technology, and it was concluded that Aspen could not resolve some of the issues with that. And that's when a number of programs were evaluated last year, about five of them, I believe.
Can I just clarify my question? I'm not confused about Teacher E's, because I attended all that stuff, and I've spoken to people about it, I'm confused about the wording of the motion itself, because I don't understand if your motion is to approve and release these funds to Teacher E's after the teachers come back and give us their feedback at the trimester, or we're releasing the funds now. Like, I don't understand the second part where you said contingent upon teacher feedback, that's the part that is confusing me. So, perhaps if we could reword it in a way that I would understand the intention, then I would be happy to vote for it.
Mr. Carino?
Well, I think the recommendation is to improve, approve the contract, to approve the contract with feedback from the teachers reported back by administration on the effectiveness of the, of the software. So, I, so, so it's approved, and what is also improved is that, that the, that the feedback will come from teachers, which will be reported by, back by administration. I think that's, that's what, what is said.
Ms. Ohensie?
I'll be voting against this for a couple reasons. It's, most pilots that we put in here are not pilots, they're permanent. Once we invest in the professional training and all that, once, you know, it never goes in reverse. This is for standard-based education in the elementary school, which the board approved. We didn't improve it in the middle school. There's supposed to be feedback on the effectiveness of the, how competency-based grading has improved learning in the high school, and when the board, the previous board approved that, and the current board hasn't rescinded it, that's on the books, that, that has never come back for, to the board. So, this is just another way of slamming the competency-based grading next to the middle school and the high school. Again, if something's a pilot, we're supposed to get feedback, we never get feedback, it always just keeps going forward. I would favor one software package that did both Aspen and what Aspen doesn't do, instead of having two. It just seems costly, and I used to work in software, the more things just keep morphing, it'll just, it'll never come together. If you don't have a package that comes together, I, I just don't, it seems wrong-headed, it seems well-intended, but for many reasons, I can't support this.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks, I have a question about the contract, and then I'll make a comment. So, in the privacy clause, which is about halfway down on the first page, it says that GCS will not knowingly disclose or disseminate any confidential information to third parties without prior consent of the school. So, whose data is this? Is it student data, is it, does it require parental consent? Is it, when he says the school, is it, is it the school district, it doesn't say the district, and does a parent ultimately have control over their student's data?
I would suggest that the school is the school district.
And would you know the, the second part in terms of, so prior consent of the school district, does that also require parental consent?
Well, I would suggest that we're not going to release the information to anybody. So, I mean, it's basically saying that they will not release it, we will not release it. This is a typical software contract, I mean, you'll see that in almost any software contract, this clause is typically in there.
So, what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, is we wouldn't give permission, so that's not a problem-
Exactly.
-and they're saying it's contingent on you giving a permission that you wouldn't give?
Right.
Okay, thank you. And my second thing has to deal with the software itself. Similar to Ms. Ohensie, I had the same concern, and I've brought this up before, is right now, this rollout for the elementary is about $33,000, and if you have one-third of our students in each of the different levels, you're looking at $120,000 worth of software in the next budget. We have $33,000 in this budget. My concern is, X2 is not going away, because it's the repository of all the student data. It's the grading part of X2 that nobody likes. So, I'm concerned that we're going to double our costs on system software, and we, similar to what Ms. Ohensie says, we need to find a package one-size-fits-all, rather than two different software that, I'm, they said they were compatible, that they can speak to each other, that's fine, but the fact is, and I think they said they still had to put information in X2, even though they were going to be using this Teacher E's. I'm not in favor of it until I get an assessment. I want to know, I want to know what the plan is for this software and X2, because of budgetary concerns, and similar to what Ms. Ohensie said, once we get it in, it's going to be there forever, we're going to have double the cost and half the, half the capability. I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Mr. Carino?
Thank you, Madam President. First thing I want to say is that this is not a pilot, okay? And what it does, does is it, it helps the teachers do their report cards. So, as far as competency-based grading, I don't know, I mean, this is basically helping them do their report cards. I understand, I understand the concerns about software, and, and this is, you know, basically going out there and getting a software which doesn't do everything that we want it to do, trying to make improvements, it's kind of a patch, a patch is what it is. But what do we do in the meantime? What do the teachers do in the meantime? X2 has so many problems, and I've heard it for years and years and years, that X2, it's just problematic. And I just want to have a quick question for Dr. McKinney. When we made this recommendation in committee, I was under the impression that, we said, with feedback from teachers reporting back to administration, so I guess what, what I want, what I was hoping is that teachers are going to, if we approve this, and teachers use it, and they start using it, I would, I would like to see administration report on what teachers, how teachers like it, and, and, and their effectiveness. That's what I, when, when we made this motion, that's, that's what I was under the impression. So, I'm wondering if, if I'm on the right track here.
We're happy to provide that information, I just need clarity, would you like that from the teachers themselves? Would you like it in print? Would you like a PowerPoint? Because the Google form survey, I see every week, I see it every Friday, and I speak to Teacher E's on it. So, I see it all the way through, from the good and the bad, from teachers. So, I'm happy to provide copies of all that information.
Yeah, that would be great, yep.
Ms. Porter?
Okay, I, I think that this Teacher E's is the natural progression in what's been happening in elementary school with standards-based grading. This has been a multi-year process, and I think that, you know, in the interest of that continuity and continuing with the great work that's been done, I am very much in favor of Teacher E's, and I think that approving this contract doesn't preclude sometime in the future, getting something together with X2. I think that those are separate issues, and I wouldn't want to hold up Teacher E's and having report cards be an easier experience and a more meaningful experience for teachers while we go out and search for something to replace X2 at this point. So, I, I personally think it would be a big mistake not to move forward with this. And just on a personal, I would wonder if, is there like a sample of what the report card looks like that we could see? Because I think that would be interesting, because, you know, given what the old report card looks like, and what the new one would look like from Teacher E's, I think would maybe help to clarify what it's going to look like, and then it'll be more probably user-friendly.
Sure, we can share a fifth-grade report card with you.
Thank you, thank you.
I would just like to say, I would like some feedback from our teachers that are using this. I'm going to support it, because I know teachers have told me the amount of time they put into the standards-based report cards can be hours and hours, and add up to almost days. So, I will support it, but I do want feedback, because this contract is for one year, and if there is something better on the market, I think we ought to keep our options open. I am concerned, much like Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Ohensie, and Mr. Carino, in the fact that we have, we're going to have two different systems, we're not sure how well they're going to talk together or blend in, and we, we might have to look at one, one software package that will deal with all of this. So, but I will support it, because I think our teachers need some, some relief in the time they put into these report cards. Dr. McKinney, did you have something you want to add?
I just wanted to speak to standards-based grading, and the opportunities that are available within Teacher E's are just unbelievable in terms of revitalizing standards-based grading that came to the district a number of years ago, and it's kind of been idle for a while, and bringing that to the forefront in terms of consistency, if you're going to have standards-based grading, you want people teaching that way and assessing that way, and having a really interactive gradebook that does that, and can, with a click of a button, generate the report cards and not spend the hours and the clicks. We can have common assessments, we can do data scoops on student performance, and we can have teachers seeing actionable data in real time. So, I would just ask the board to keep all those things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ohensie?
I'm sorry, I didn't mention, we're under the two-minute, one-minute, two times to speak, so you have one minute this time.
Thank you very much. I just want to put in context that we didn't have problems with X2 or Aspen before competency-based grading. It has multiplied in our costs for software, and this, this new software, again, is competency-based grading. So, the more we, the deeper we get into it, the more our costs are mounting. Maine just reversed it, just got out of the grading. They decided it wasn't an effective way of learning. I'm disappointed that this board hasn't gotten the report it asked for from the high schools, on how does competency-based grading, you know, the evidence, the data, that it improves learning, because I think we're supposed to make data-driven decision-making, and I just, we need more information.
Okay, thank you. Could you reread the motion?
Sure, sure. The motion is to approve Teacher E's contract for $36,991.50, with feedback from the teachers reported back by administration on the effectiveness of software, and feedback from other similar-sized districts currently using Teacher E's.
Roll call.
Are you ready for the motion, are you ready for the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie? Ms. Hoensie?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
We have two noes and six yeses. The motion carries. Okay. Next item on our agenda from Finance and Operations is a service agreement from Securidine Systems. This is false security. If anyone has any, oh, okay, yeah, we have, it's actually a three-year contract. We decided to do it in three years. And by doing that, we're, we're going to be saving some money. If anyone has any questions about this contract, Mr. Donovan did go over this in detail. Mr. Donovan will help me, as he always does, to answer any questions. So I'd like to move to approve the three-year Securidine Systems security contract for $90,000 the first year, $94,500 the second year, and $99,225,000 for the third year.
Second. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Call the roll.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Our next contract was for Amherst Street LED lighting upgrade contract with Affinity to proceed to Eversource for funding. This was a recommendation for, that we got from Mr. Smith. Once again, if anyone has any questions about this, we've been doing all of our schools periodically and to try to save money, try to save money on energy. So I'm going to move to approve the Amherst Street LED lighting upgrade contract with Affinity to proceed to Eversource for funding.
Second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Oh, perhaps just look at Mr. Donovan. I think he's the best one. So two things, Dan. We hired an energy consultant that was going to do all the buildings. And if I recall correctly, they would come up with projects and their fee would be paid out of the savings that would ultimately be generated. So is this a project that has come out of that relationship?
No, no. The, the contract with them is they're, they're going to be working on the two high schools.
Okay, okay.
This is something we've been doing at a number of the elementary schools and middle schools. And it's, we don't have to pay anything for it. We basically get the, the savings that we get in the electricity, we use to pay for the cost of it. And in this case, the estimate is 42 months. We'll have, when, when this contract with Affinity goes to Eversource, we'll get back information from Eversource with a little more exact numbers. The pricing here is, is what we're getting from Affinity. Then we'll get the breakdown on the savings from Eversource.
So is there additional, so there's no additional out-of-pocket, other than the paying your bill every month, that whatever, they'll?
Yes. The savings will offset any cost we have and at the end of the,
Four years.
The 42 months, then we'll have all the savings who'll accrue to us.
Okay, so, okay, so there's no additional out-of-pocket. That's really what I was concerned about. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to?
Okay. On the motion to approve Amherst Street LED lighting upgrade contract with Affinity to proceed to Eversource for funding, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond has temporarily left. Ms. Timmons has temporarily left. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and zero noes. Motion carries. Our last item is the, the transfer report for September. I'm not going to go over each item. Mr. Donovan did that at the committee level. So what I'm going to do is move to approve the fiscal year 2019 September transfer report.
Okay.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Call the roll, please.
On the motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 September transfer report, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons, on the motion to, to approve the September transfer report?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I have eight yeses and zero noes. Motion carries.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
A point of order. In our packet, we also had a, in addition to the transfer report, there was a financial report. And I note that it's not on the committee recommendations. Was it, I mean, obviously you wanted us to do it. I mean,
That's in the consent agenda.
Oh, oh.
We usually put the financial report in the consent agenda. The transfer report needs to be approved if it's got items over, I think, $5,000 or $10,000, so.
Okay, I'll ask my question next month then. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Committee on Policy.
Thank you. We have quite a bit of work this month on policy. So the first thing is, I move to approve Policy ILBAS, statewide assessments as amended.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Any comments, any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Porter?
I have a question. This, it says results. So the statewide assessment results of a student or the student's school district shall not be included as part of the student's transcript unless the student, if 18 years or under. Do you mean over there, if just, if the student is 18 years or if the parent or legal guardian is under? Oh, it should say older. I apologize. Okay, thank you. Or, or older. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to do a friendly amendment to my motion to change under to older in the paragraph under results. I don't think it needs a whole amendment.
In both instances? You have it twice?
In the first instance. So it should read, if the student, unless the student, if 18 years of age or older, or the student's parent or legal guardian, if the student is under 18 years of age, consents. So for our 18-year-olds, they can consent themselves. For the under 18, parents have to consent. And I believe that was simply a transcription error as we copied it from the law.
Do you need a second?
Friendly amendment.
Second.
Thank you.
Could you, could you say what the paragraph?
Shall I make it an official amendment? Would that be easier?
Friendly amendment is fine. But what, what paragraph was that?
It's the first paragraph under results. First sentence, first instance of the word under. Should be older. Do you see it in the red?
Under results. Which, which, oh, okay, I see. I got you. So it should say, unless the student, if 18 years or under, the student's parent?
It should say older.
Is older. Okay.
That is merely a typo.
Okay. Are you ready for the roll call?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion to approve Policy ILBAS statewide assessment, assessments as amended with the friendly amendment, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver? I'm sorry. Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. I move to approve Policy JICI Weapons on School Property as amended. I'd also like to make a motion to amend this policy to strike the last sentence of the first paragraph, beginning with any persons and ending with law enforcement authorities.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Hoensie. If, may I speak to it?
Sure.
Thank you. We discussed this at length in our policy meetings. We've had two policy meetings regarding this. I've gotten quite a bit of advice and feedback from both Corporation Council and our law enforcement partners over at Nashville PD. And basically, the, the reason I want to strike, we took it out and then we added something back in at the last policy meeting. I was overruled. But having spoken again with people in authority, I believe that that line continues to be contraindicated by the current state law. And the whole purpose of revising this policy was to bring it into alignment with the state law. The changes that we have here, if we strike that, will bring it into alignment with both state law and it also would not conflict with the federal Safe Schools Act. We still say students can't bring weapons. So my proposal is that we leave it like this. And if people feel like there need to be changes in state law, then they can take that up with the state legislature. Like, don't have any control over what the state legislature decides to do.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I am against the, Ms. Raymond's amendment to strike out the last sentence in the first paragraph. What has happened in New Hampshire is that politicians in Concord, such as governor, the governor and state senators, have taken away local control from municipal boards of education. So that we have to conform to a, a really bad state law that allows any person with a weapon on school property. Politicians in Concord are out of touch with what parents like me want for our kids. We do not want weapons on school property. That's just common sense. And what is also common sense is that if anyone sees someone on school property with any type of weapon, they should notify the police. That in itself, I believe that that in itself does not violate anyone's rights. What it does, it puts the police, which they have been trained and sworn to protect the public, between our students and any person who brings any weapon on school property. They don't necessarily have to arrest anyone, but I believe the police should know about, I believe the police should know about people walking around school property with a weapon. It makes perfect sense to keep our kids safe. That's what parents want and that's what I want as a parent.
Ms. Hoensie and then Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I just wanted to reassure Mr. Guarino that taking this out, any person can still notify the police. You know, see something, say something. This statement says they will be reported. It's sort of like command. But there's no reason why an individual can't, on his own initiative, say something to the police. And if the police determine that there's a problem, they can act. I'm just saying it doesn't preclude what you want. It just doesn't command it.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Sorry, I don't recall what policy it is, but we have a policy that says none of our policies can overrule state or federal law, essentially, at least state law. I recall that part of it. So we should not knowing, I think, sorry about that. Ms. Raymond's point is to try and align the policy with state law. This, as Ms. Raymond suggested, contradicts that. So if we knowingly do that, we're putting ourselves in a position where we could be sued. And it also violates another policy. So I would, I would support Ms. Raymond's amendment to withdraw this particular sentence. And just Ms. Oden, I do have another comment on another part of this. But I, we want to deal, I would think, with one piece at a time, so.
Mr. Guarino, you have a one minute to respond. You had your hand up.
Yeah. No, I, I don't think it makes any difference what I was going to say. That's all right.
I got something to say.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I've been through this kind of situation before. And unfortunately, we have to comply exactly with the RSA. And that means that, that, that extra line will have to be taken out.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Just to speak to the objections to this. I am a parent as well. I completely understand Mr. Guarino's feelings about wanting our children to be safe at school. I believe we've, we said this in the policy meeting. I mean, I would not encourage people to bring loaded weapons around children, just in general. It's generally not the best choice. Certainly, in today's climate, it probably wouldn't be a good choice to do it at a school either. But we have a state law here that we need to follow. And for anybody wondering, RSA 15926, paraphrasing here, it states that only the state, not cities or towns or municipalities like school district, can regulate firearms for people. Any city or town ordinances about guns would be null and void, except for zoning and hunting. So my push this year has been to bring our policies into line with state law. And again, if anybody feels that that state law puts kids at risk or they have a personal objection to it, that's something to be brought up with their current representatives. And certainly the people who are running for office. We have an election in eight days. Maybe we should talk about that and vote outside of the Board of Education meeting.
You did not use your one minute, so you may have that one minute?
I have something real quick. I just want to thank Ms. Raymond for that. And I, I do appreciate her, her, what she said, that we have to conform to state law, as did Mr. Mosher did, and they're absolutely correct. I just want to make, make one last final point. That that state law is a bad state law and it takes away local control from local boards of education. That's what they did in Concord. So let's, I just want people to be aware of that.
Okay. Can we move the motion, please?
This vote is to remove, this is for the amendment, not on the, on the main motion, to remove the last sentence in the first paragraph. So a yes would be to remove the last sentence. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay, the, the amendment passes. We have one no and we have seven yeses. So the amendment carries. We will remove the last sentence on the first paragraph.
Mrs. Oden?
Mr. Kaufman?
Back to the main motion.
Wait, he's writing it down?
No, I have a comment. As I said, I had, wanted to speak to the amendment. I had another comment.
Okay.
So just for clarification purposes, not intending to change the intent, but I just want to point out, in the second paragraph, there's mentions of the two RSAs, 15924 and 15920. I note that they're not mentioned in the legal references below, I note that they're not mentioned in the legal references below, which in other instances where you've cited various USC's or whatever, you have them down there. And then, based upon your most recent comment, Ms. Raymond, you mentioned that 15926 was also relevant. So I would ask that the committee consider adding, in the legal reference section, 15920, 15924, and 15926.
Thank you. I'm happy to ask Tara to do that. I don't think that it requires a motion, since it's already in the document. Regarding 15926, because our policy is now about students, and it's in the student section, I don't know that we need that one. Any feedback from people who know more than me about that? I don't care one way or the other, we can have it.
Only because you referenced it as part of your explanation, so in that regard, if you felt it was relevant to explain it to us, perhaps it's relevant for someone who's doing research.
So I'll ask Ms. Kinsella when she is typing up the final thing, to make sure that all of the legal references are there.
Because it refers to the students, it's a cross-reference, is more than anything. And it's okay to have a cross-reference, but it's not relevant specifically to this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready for the vote on the main motion?
I believe we are.
Madam President. On the motion to approve policy JICI weapons on school property as amended with removal of the last sentence in the first paragraph. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
This is very hard. I'll say yes, but I'm not happy.
I have one no and seven yeses. The motion carries.
I'd like to take a minute. It is now five minutes to nine, and we have to have a motion to extend our meeting for another 30 minutes. Ms. Raymond?
I'd like to move to extend our meeting for another 30 minutes, as we continue to work on the items on the agenda.
Second. Okay.
Point of order, Mrs. Oden? So given Ms. Raymond's, I'm, I'm, and you're looking at me, I think you recognize me. Did you recognize me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, just so everybody's clear. So Ms. Raymond said for the purposes of things on the agenda. So I have several things under new business I would like to bring forward. New business is on here. Will I be able to bring forward those items? Which is the board's right.
If it does not fall within that time period, no, it'll have to wait till the next meeting, unless somebody extends it again.
All right, thank you.
Ready for the vote, Madam President? On the motion to extend the meeting for another 30 minutes for the purposes of finishing the agenda, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Ready?
Ready.
Great. So the next item is, I'd like to move to rescind policy 1311, Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Thank you. If I can speak to it briefly, we sent this forward from the Policy Committee, because this is a job description, it's not a policy. And this is very clearly Ed. 302, so I don't feel like we need it.
Any questions, comments? Okay.
On the motion to rescind policy 1311, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter has temporarily left the room. I have seven yeses and zero nos. The motion carries.
Thank you. I move to rescind policy 11211, the annual report.
Second.
Thank you. I want to speak to it. Yes, thank you. This policy was last reviewed in 2005. It's been 13 years. Having done some research on it, no one can remember the last time there was an annual report. It's been at least eight years. It's not something that's been our practice. Much of this information is on our website or provided to us through the budget process. So I would like to remove any policies that we are not actually following and aren't applicable anymore.
We do have a second. Ms. Fitzpatrick, you wanted to speak to that?
I wanted, excuse me, I wanted to also add that at our subcommittee policy meeting, Mr. Kaufman had asked about having the information readily available on the website, based on the Dover School District policy. And two things, we have put a link on the district website in the page where it says "About Us," at the very bottom. It says "District Report Card." We have not put all of the information on there, but we have begun to work on building that. It has a lot of information from the state DOE, where people could access it there, but we're making it more accessible on our website. I want to point out that Dover's goes back to 2005, and in spite of trying to speak to people there and contact and find things on the website, they don't do this. But we are doing it, because that was something that was requested of us at the subcommittee meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to point out that I brought attention to the board about this annual report, reminding people that it was on the books. Just because it was on the books and not followed for a long period of time doesn't mean that it should be removed and deleted. I will point out, as I have said previously in committee, that this particular policy, CM is the one that, in the new way they categorize them from numbers to letters, is on the New Hampshire School Board Association's list of recommended policies to follow. So to suggest that people are not using it means that they're not using it. It doesn't mean that it's a bad policy. It means it's a policy that hasn't been used and it should be followed. The public has a right to know this information. And I will also point out that, what is it, the MS-22 and the MS-26 forms make specific reference to the annual meeting, which would occur at the annual report. So I think it's premature to get rid of this policy. To do so, I think you're inhibiting the ability of the board to do its business. The public has a right to know this information. It wasn't previously available, as it was suggested, oh, this stuff is on our website. The fact is, it was not. That page was added, perhaps maybe today, because I looked at the date of last update anyway, and that was today. That information is nowhere near complete. It's a first attempt. I would encourage the board to keep this policy active and ask the administration, per policy, to fulfill its requirements and provide this in an annual report and distribute it according to the second paragraph here in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be voting against this motion to rescind.
I'm ready to say something.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, you know, I look at the annual reports, and I find that some of these smaller districts, because they are small districts, they, very easy for them to put up a annual report, which may only be two pages. But considering the amount of information that's in our large district, that by putting up an annual report, this is just an exercise in redundancy, because all of the information that we need is either available through the website, or through the other means of the searching into the website for information, or it's information that will be posted to the website in the near future. So I think that it's a waste of time and effort to go and produce another documents or documents, just because, well, it's on the books. It's on the books because maybe they, smaller districts, they do not have a published website, and the information is not always available, but because it is a small district, somebody can walk in at a board meeting and get an update on the report. So I think that this is foolish to keep it on the books.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
I noticed that Ms. Hohensie hasn't spoken yet.
Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I just think it's great that we have a report card on the website. But instead of calling it a report card, why not call it a report? Why not annually update it? And then it's essentially an annual report. Because until the DRA stops sending us these MS-26C and MS-22 forms that require a due date 20 days after the annual, you know, annual meeting with the annual report, it just seems premature. It seems like if we keep the policy, label the website to coincide, at least it'll be a connection for the next board to say, see, we're keeping this information live, you're getting the report, it's on the website. I'd rather be in compliance than just throw things out. I think more information is good, and we're already started on producing it. So I think it's a great idea to keep this.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I sincerely appreciate the district's efforts to continue to update and expand the website. But I would suggest that most of this information is in our budgeting book. We go through this very clearly over several weeks in the spring, and by the end of it, we have a book that is several thousand pages long, that is, in fact, available to the public, with all of our financial information, all of the planned programs on what we're budgeting for for the next year. Anyone could contact District Office and ask to see it, or ask for copies. So I would suggest that there's no hiding our financial information. It's just thousands of pages, and it takes weeks for us as a board to go through it. And I would imagine it would take an average person quite a bit of time to read it themselves. It's there. There are ways to access it. So, you know, it may be that we're already in compliance, but I think that our policies ought to be purposeful, and they ought to be helping the district to provide a service to the district. And I don't see this one as being something that is anything but redundant at this point. So.
Ready to move the motion?
Okay, we're ready for the vote on the motion to rescind policy 11211, annual report. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have two nos and six yeses. Motion carries six to two.
I move to rescind policy 1216, sexual harassment.
Second.
Thank you. And just to speak to this, I'm not suggesting that we not have a sexual harassment policy. We have two policies. We actually have three policies right now on sexual harassment. We have this old numbered one that hasn't been looked at since 2002. And then we have JBAA, which is Sexual Discrimination, Sexual Harassment, and Sexual Violence for Students. And we have GBAA, which is the same, involving staff, both of which were updated back in 2015. So this is simply a third copy of the same thing we have in two other places, and I assume that it just wasn't rescinded at the time that these were approved. So housekeeping.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Can we move the motion?
On the motion to rescind policy 1216, sexual harassment, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have eight yeses and zero nos. Motion carries.
Thank you. My last one is, I move to rescind policy 1136, the Community Relations Committee.
Second.
Thank you. This is a policy that was suspended back in 2005. It was originally created in 2004 for a specific purpose. We have not used this purpose in 13 years now. I would suggest that, should we need one, we can make one again in the future, but I am sincerely trying to clean up our hundreds of policies to ones that are relevant to the district.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Move the motion, please.
On the motion to rescind policy 1136, Community Relations Committee, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. It is now 10 after 9:00. We have two more committees to go through. They should go quickly. I'm looking at poor Mr. Richard up there, who has to get up in the morning to get to his school by, I think, 7:10 or 7:20. So hopefully, we can move right along with these. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Ms. Van Twyver is not here. Who's on curriculum?
I am. Do you want to go ahead and take it?
Sure. This is time sensitive, I believe, so. I would like to move that we accept the changes to the footsteps, which is the high school course selections and the CTE pilot courses, as proposed here for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I'll make a comment. I thought the high school people did a great job going through this. They gave explanations. And the thing, most of the changes benefit our students, so congratulations to them. I support this wholeheartedly. Roll call?
On the motion to accept changes to footsteps, high school course selection, and the CTE pilot courses for the 2019-2020 school year, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Committee on Human Resources from a meeting held earlier this evening.
I move to suspend the rules. We met earlier at 5:35 PM today.
Why don't we make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
On the motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to move to accept the recommendation to approve Ms. Hussey for interim assistant principal for Fairgrounds Elementary School for the 2018-2019 school year, with an annual salary of $73,500.
Second. Any questions, comments? I will say, we did speak with her this evening, and she seems like she will be a good fit for our district. She has some Lucy Cockens experience, and also has worked in a Title I school, so I think it's a good fit. Okay?
On the motion to approve the interim assistant principal for Fairgrounds Elementary, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Last but not least, I'd like to approve the personnel recommendation dated October 29, 2018.
Second. Any questions, comments? Okay. Move the motion.
On the motion to approve personnel recommendations, October 29, 2018, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. The next thing would be liaison reports. Is there anybody who has one?
I do.
Could we put that off? Could we suspend the... That's not the word I want. Just postpone that until we deal with Mr. Richard so he can give his report and get out of here, and then we can go back to the liaison. Does anybody have a problem with that? If we need a vote, we can take a vote?
Table it.
Would you like to table it until the next meeting? Mine is not time sensitive.
Okay. Is yours time sensitive, Mr.?
Well, it was in the packet.
Okay.
So I...
Okay.
I have no problem with it being addressed after Mr. Richard speaks. But I would like to have it addressed tonight.
Thank you. Okay. I know you probably wish I had done this a lot sooner. Sorry.
I'll be brief. Thank you. And it will not be as inspiring as our students to kick this off. So I apologize for that as well. But I believe everybody has received our final report, the final report. And even though the word "final" attached to that, we're really kind of in the middle of the game. So just kind of walk you through the timeline and what our next steps will be, but kind of step back. Leading up to this report, we had an 18-month self-study that we worked with that was staff-driven on the seven standards, which, as you look through the report, the seven standards that we dug deep and self-reflected to see where we're at and where we need to improve. We created our self-report and submitted that. Last March, the 25th to 28th, we had a visiting team come in. They met with you guys on that Sunday, and they were with us for three days, kind of just seeing, are we walking the walk and talking the talk that we had in our report? And they want to give us feedback. What can we do better, and what are we doing well? So the final report came in, and as you read through it, they came to conclusions. And they also provided recommendations and accommodations. And as like any good student, the first things I went to was the recommendations and accommodations. Forget about that, you know, long narrative at first. And what we're doing right now as a school is kind of looking through, and what are those themes that you see coming through on the recommendations? Certainly, some themes around like our core values and belief statement. You'll see that throughout. And that's kind of a shift that NEAS can make in the previous cycle, where that document is something that the schools have, and it's a living and breathing document where everything you do should drive and support that. Think of the strategic planning that you guys are going through as you come up with those four or five goals, whatever they are. Everything you do should reflect and make progress towards those goals. Same thing with our core values and beliefs. So that's something that we need to strengthen, and also just kind of make sure that everything we're doing moving forward drives that. And you'll kind of see that throughout. A couple of themes I saw, recommendations is funding. Nothing new to this board, as you're aware. As Mr. Kaufman already kind of talked about, the budget cycle already begins, you know, as you probably talk about that as we get into the winter. And that's just a common theme, I think, through school districts throughout. And a couple of other themes that pop up, PD for teachers, trying to find collaborative time for our teachers to get together and do the good work that they can do. The accommodations, I think some of the themes I definitely saw was our staff. I think the people that were there and visiting with our students and staff truly appreciated the dedication that our staff has. They are very complimentary on our competency-based grading system that we created. Many of the staff that came for the visit team from Massachusetts, kind of a different model, they kind of said they're not there yet, but something certainly they're kind of striving towards. And I just want to... Our building, we really appreciate the commitment that the city of Ashra made in 2002 or, you know, 2000, when they built the two high schools and renovated Nashua South. And our custodial staffs in both high schools do an amazing job to keep those buildings so clean and upkeep. And we get comments all the time on people saying, how old is this building? And, you know, it's amazing to say Nashua South was renovated 16 years ago. So what happens next? So the final report was done by our visiting chair. I think you guys met with Bruce. He's from Boston Public Schools. This goes to a commission next. And the commission gets together, they read through the report, and they decide what our next steps are. And for the people, you have a two-year progress report, a five-year progress report, and then you get ready for your next visit. There could be also special progress reports in there, just because they want to kind of see, how are you doing on this specific highlighted recommendation that they might find? To be honest, I bet we'll have a special progress report on our core values and belief statement, you know, and make sure that is solidified, the timeline's in place, and we're ready to go moving forward. Once those reports are done, that is through a follow-up committee that I'll create with our staff. Because, again, this is staff-driven. This isn't driven by Keith, the principal. This is staff coming together and finding out what we need to do to make South a better place. The beauty of this is North is going through their visit in December. I'm just going to go out on a limb and say they probably have similar things to kind of work on. So I think working with Nate here, once we get through... I'm not going to go too fast, because I'm sure when they get their report, we're going to be working collaboratively. And I think that's something you guys would want us to do anyways. It's the same goals. They're Nashua kids. It's not a South kid and a North kid. We're really graduating Nashua students, and we'd want to make sure that we have the same goals moving forward. So that's the progress. Those are the next steps. As far as the report, I went to our staff when we got it, sent on email. We'll have a meeting on that sent to you guys. Next is I'll put it on our website, share it with our parents, and also get a copy out to The Telegraph or any other local newspapers that would want to have as public document and for everybody to see. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Richard. So you mentioned the goals, and you'll probably need to do some work around aligning them. So I'm curious, you have something now, and that's... the alignment is what's going on in the building based upon what your stated goals are, right?
Correct. That's what we need to strengthen.
Okay. But it gets another dimension of complexity, doesn't it, with the advent come, you know, certainly by this time next year, this final report's supposed to be done for the strategic plan in the spring. I would imagine we'll have it for the summer at least. So would the schools then, the high schools and the other schools, need to recalibrate their goals based upon those that are put forth in the strategic plan? So you'd have to realign your realignment? I mean, am I thinking right, or...
Yeah, no, good. I'm glad you brought that up. So when I met... We have seminars, so I had a follow-up seminar with George Edwards and other schools. We actually hosted it. And I mentioned that we're going through a strategic plan, and he thought that is a great way for the schools to align. One of the things that, you know, why should... And another thing is our schools right now, we're going through a lot of social-emotional learning training. A lot of those expectations that you hear are soft skills, things like that. Those are those skills that we want our students to have. I mean, we probably should have K to five set of skills, you know, six to eight, nine through 12, that all kind of funnel together. I don't know, you know, maybe not 17 schools all doing something different. They all kind of align together when you really look at what the nuts and bolts of them are. But if that is something that came out of the strategic plan, we would be able to align that, I think, pretty easily. They're pretty close. The next thing for NEAS, because they changed their process. So the prior visit, we had a mission statement. That changed to the core values. Well, they're changing again to a vision of the graduate. So what do we see... So after we get through our five-year progress report, we'll be shifting to our new standards. But I kind of like the idea of what do we as the National School District, National Community, what would we want our graduate to be? And I kind of like that thinking process of what will a graduate have for those skills, that content knowledge, what, you know, characteristics do we want them to leave with? And again, that might be a great conversation with the strategic planning moving forward too. But just so you know, things are always changing in education. So when we get to the next cycle, those standards will have a shift, just in case you hear that vision of the graduate, just so you're aware.
Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you. You mentioned something that you're doing, and I've heard this over and over, the social-emotional learning that you're learning and incorporating. Somebody, it would be nice if somebody came to the board and gave us more of a background on what it is. Is this something that the board has... I don't know that the board has approved it. I mean, why is it going in when we don't even know what it is or approve what's... It just seems a little... No offense to you, but it just, you brought up something. It's like this board needs to know more about what's happening so we can at least be aware. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Richard. Sorry you had to wait so long. Okay. So at this point, we will go back to liaison reports. Ms. Raymond, and then Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I'll be brief. We had our ed council meeting last week, and we met with representatives from the elementary, the middle, and the high schools. It was a very, very thorough meeting. I think we talked quite a bit. Some of the main themes of the meeting were this teacher, the substitute teacher shortage. This is a concern for all of our staff. And we kind of brainstormed for some ideas on what the district can do to address that beyond what it's doing. I mean, we're already having job fairs and doing outreach on, you know, ads. But one of the things that came up was perhaps looking at some of our college students and partnering with Riviere or the community college to see if there's a pool of people that we could tap into there who are, you know, looking for days of work. Again, I think budgeting becomes an issue over and over again in this economy. Another... The other big matter that came up during the meeting was discipline, especially at the middle school. Teachers are concerned about consistency. There's a lot of discussion about minor infractions versus major infractions and how those ought to be handled. And we talked a lot about the student handbook. And basically, it sounds like that's something that we ought to be looking at. Perhaps we need to be revising some of our disciplinary structure and looking at how we can incorporate a more behavior management style that works for everybody. So it sounds like the teachers are very open to continuing that dialogue and giving some feedback in their individual schools, and then perhaps even doing some focus groups as we move on. So I was kind of excited about the idea of making some changes. So the next meeting is in January.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, you had something?
Yes, thank you. So we received a big packet on the strategic plan. It's not on the agenda, but is it not a liaison... It's a special committee. Would it not be reported under the liaison? And I do have a couple of observations, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you. So I attended the middle school evening for parents over at South. We had about 15 parents, which was great. The problem, what disturbed me, is they were only from two of the middle schools. Pennachuck wasn't represented at all. And Dr. Mosley thought that maybe he would do another session or something to try and capture those folks. But when I looked through, and by the way, Ms. Stacy Hines has the most beautiful penmanship I've seen in a long time. We're seeing four people, half a dozen people, you know, maybe 10 or 12 at the various schools, less than that at the planning meetings. I'm just concerned the turnout isn't what we would hope it to be. And I've suggested before that to get parents involved, like the middle school, for example, the kids need to be involved. If the kids are buzzed about the strategic plan, the parents are going to get buzzed about the strategic plan. And what I don't see in this planning process, I know we have two high school students on the planning committee, but the fact is, to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing going on either in the elementary, certainly the middle schools, because those are the kids... Whatever the strategic plan does for two to five years from now, the middle... High school kids are gone. They don't care. They're in their own planet anyway. So the middle schools are the ones who are going to have to live with the consequences of the strategic plan. I think they should be given an opportunity to help create it, because if you can get their buy-in at the front end, I think the results are going to be spectacular at the back end. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We have to extend the time. I think we have covered just about everything.
We need a non-public tonight, too.
We do need a non-public.
So we have two minutes left.
If anybody under new business, follow up on a report of a weapon on a bus. Do we have time to address that?
I don't think so.
Unless we have... Do we have anyone from board comment? Because it would be a shame for them to stay here all this time, and then they don't get public.
Okay. Why don't we have public comment, and then we can...
Not the board comments, public.
Adam Marku, President of the Nashua Teachers Union. I live at 4 GeLauri Lane. It's been late nights, you know, Red Sox-Patriots. They're winning right now.
Some of us are DVR-ing it.
Listen, I did not tell you the score. I whispered to Dan because he asked. Okay, sorry. I just wanted to... I had heard about the kids coming tonight from South. I read in the packet how exciting for us and fortunate we are to have kids caring enough about other kids to spend the time, energy, resources to do that. That's a club. That's part of the class. But then the club was involved, and outside of their own school day. We're very fortunate to have that. I volunteered to be taped to the wall, whatever that meant. So, you know, I'll let you know when that's happening. You can come throw things at me. Dan said cool, so put that on the record. And I was also educated tonight about the food policy. I was under the impression that if you had a negative account balance, regardless of how old you were, you received something for lunch. And I was disturbed to find out that that did not include the high school kids, who, in my opinion, I feel are being penalized because of their situation. I would urge strongly for the policy committee to take this matter up quickly and not penalize those students. If this plan works with those kids, which it sounds like it's going to, because they're motivated, they've talked to everyone they need to talk to, they've got a lot of people behind them, and a lot more energy than I do, I don't think that's going to be a budget problem. However, that would be money well worth spent at any of the 17 schools to make sure any child that's hungry, whether it's breakfast or lunch, is fed, regardless if they have money in their account, regardless if they qualify for free or reduced lunch. I think it's a travesty right now, and I would urge the policy committee to take that up as soon as possible and address those concerns so we have kids eating. And I really think the policy committee needs to change the rule that says it's that gross sun butter sandwich only, and let them have whatever's being fed to them that day. Because honestly, we're food shaming kids, and it's not their fault. And they came forward with a solution that I'm sure many people, including the Nashua Teachers Union, will be glad to support moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marku. Is there anybody else? Okay, it is 9:31. I will be looking for a motion to go into non-public session.
Right, I move that we go into non-public session under RSA 91A32C and E. I think that'll do it.
We didn't extend the time.
I don't think we have to for a non-public.
I don't think you have to for a non-public.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Looking for...
On the motion to go into non-public session, okay, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Greeno votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion carries eight to zero.